Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hello everyone, really glad you're here today.
We are so excited to have you, just as we are so excited as always to have Julianne Collin with us. What's up you guys? Hello. So today we are going to be talking about creating dynamic campaigns with Get Oiling and we'll break that down just a little bit in our slides today. But essentially if you are interested in educating and engaging with people, whether that be your customers or your leads in ways beyond just texting or just emailing, or you want to know what the right things are to send or how to set up a campaign properly to send via text or email, or maybe even a little bit of both. Or if you want to have maybe some some sort of fail safes in place in case something doesn't deliver one way, it delivers another. We're going to talk about all of those options today in some detail, as well as share some exciting announcements. We've got some housekeeping that we're going to get through at the top here with with some slides. Greg's going to share some exciting announcements and then we're going to get into our training. So as you're joining us, go ahead and let us know where in the world you are. How busy is your week this week? We're coming up on the holiday season. It is a frantic time, I think for a lot of us. My family is getting ready to travel quite a distance across the country and stay there for for the holidays. And we got a lot going on here. I think we're going to do Christmas like three or four different times with, you know, us here and then there and all the different stuff. So what's that looking like for you guys? What are you using to keep yourself cool and level? Are you taking Cortisone? Is it lavender? Like, do you dump a whole bottle on your head? What does that look like for you? Share in the comments. Let us know how things are going for you now. We're going to pop out a video, get into our slides and keep it going in the chat because we are always excited to hear from you guys. And we'll come back out in video here in just a bit and spend some more time together. So first, things first, we're going to get into today's content. Welcome everybody. Today we're talking about creating dynamic email and text campaigns with Get Oiling. So today first Greg is going to share with us some exciting new stuff that's in the works with Get Oiling. This is something that you'll see growing over time, but there is now a place to more or less deploy a theme for your website, which is which is really cool. And Greg's going to give you all the details of that. There are also more, there's more that we're getting into here today. We're going to get into our training. We'll talk about what campaigns are in Get Oiling and overview of the different settings that are available to send to using your campaigns, right? So sending out via email or text and the different varying opportunities there to do so. We'll share best practices for each option, setup and use cases for each as well, as well as live help and Q and A. Oh, welcome. Keep it coming you guys. Lavender. Yes, awesome. And happy birthday Adrian. We were just celebrating a dear friend's birthday last night here in New York City. Our reservation was quite late. It was a very late night. So I hope that you are celebrating similarly and having a great time. Can't recommend Dirt Candy enough. It's a great place to go if you want to have some really nice vegetables. All right. So today we're going to be getting into all that. If you have questions, you need help, add it to the Q and A. And of course, if you would like to join us on a live call, if you're watching this on YouTube or you're seeing this in our Facebook group, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on a live Zoom like this one and join all of these incredible people who are in the chat right now. I'm seeing pine and evergreen essence as being things that you're using right now to calm the stress, maybe get in the spirit. That's awesome you guys. Keep it coming. All right. Now, if you want to join us on a call like this one to get one-on-one live help, if you are working on something, you need some hands-on help, go to getoiling.com/web site review, fill out the form there and you can choose a future Thursday. We're live every Thursday at noon Eastern US time unless it is a major US holiday. And you can secure a spot on one of those. And finally, if you would like for us to help you get things done, getoiling.com/conceiers where you want to go to learn about our team so that they can help you. You can fill out a form to request a quote for whatever it is that you need hands-on assistance with. All right. So with that Greg, I'd like to toss it over to you. Can you tell us about our exciting new update that you have created?
Yes, absolutely can. And I will share out my screen here as well. If they're going, because that's always a fun place for this to where my type of announcements tend to happen. So yes, we've got a couple more, well, not more than more than a couple, I believe it's eight page templates, eight new page templates on top of what we released the other the other time we had talked, as well as a new, the facility or at least the mechanism for including resource bundle. So you can, you know, we can provide other content to you in the future, whether it be tunnels or whole page themes or that kind of thing, all connected up with campaigns and such. So the changes you can see here are under pages. When you go to add a new one, a couple of changes you'll see. First of all, there's eight more page templates down here, the which one is here? So yeah, the landing like gray landing page, like gray theme, essentially like gray landing page. Lead magnet, thank you. Post purchase, thank you. Sales page are the four that are there. And there is a soft pink variety of those as well, all four of those pages. So those are, those are individual page templates. So for example, if I would click on this one, it's going to come up and and pull that up. So you can edit it and replace it and you can change the colors if you would like in the graphics and all that. But because it's a normal page template, the other exciting change here is at the top of the page, there's tabs here now. So you can choose from individual pages as well as funnel bundles. And and now we have two of those, those are those gray and pink ones that I showed you just a minute ago. Except they're all together and they actually have camp, you know, I think there's a campaign or two included. So if we click on it, it actually opens up the resource bundle link, include some instructions for you on what to do. And then you can see what's all included. It includes four pages and three campaigns. And they're all connected together, or if they're not, you know, they'll give you instructions on what to do with them. And there's some, there's some work you have to put into this. Of course, you have to, you know, modify it for your own offer. But anyway, the, so there's a couple of those in there. We've got the gray and the pink one. And some of the prior resource bundles that we put into the weekly work session trainings will be showing up here in the future as well. We'll make it a little bit easier to find than digging through YouTube. And then hopefully we'll make it so that you don't have to necessarily watch the training. But the training will be, you know, always available on the YouTube channel as well. It'll just make it easier to pull in some of these awesome resources that we've created over the years so they can have them more accessible. But yeah, that's the the start of something fun here in this funnel bundles tab. But all your other individual pages are there along with eight more awesome new templates. So hopefully that we find those useful when you're creating websites and you know, let us know if you have any questions, thoughts, feedback, if anyone has any page templates they absolutely love on other websites that they've seen. You know, feel free to send them in. We always love to look at them and see if there's something we can do to incorporate something similar into Get Oiling. So yeah, that is the announcement today for me anyway.
Awesome. Thank you so much Greg. How exciting is that you guys? And there's more to come there. So make sure that as you are creating in your account that you are checking in on that. It's really, really a lot more to come there to save you time. So let's get into this, you guys. Let's talk about campaigns. Let me know in the chat how you use campaigns in your Get Oiling account. Or if you are interested in using campaigns and maybe you aren't yet, how would you like to use them? Do you want to educate your customers? Do you want to onboard your new customers? Do you want to let new leads know a little bit about who you are, maybe know a little bit about young living? What does that look like for you? So before we get into all of the minutia of campaigns, let's first talk about what they are. So what a campaign is in Get Oiling, and this is a feature in Get Oiling. You can go to Get Oiling and search for campaigns and find this feature. All right. So campaigns in Get Oiling are a series of messages that are automatically sent out to your contacts at a predetermined set of intervals or dates, right? So that mean, that might mean they're they're getting an email a day for 14 days. It might mean that they are getting a set of emails leading up to a certain date. And then another set of emails following a certain date, lots of different options there. These campaigns can be sent via email. They could be sent via text and they can be sent both, like one campaign can send both email and text to your contacts. And this can be used for evergreen automation. So that means like delivering a lead magnet. So if somebody puts their name and email address onto a form on your website, no matter what hour or time of day it is, day of the year it is, they're going to get that thing and the other things that you want to come with it via email and or text, right? So that is one way that's evergreen, completely automated. There are also drip sequences, and so that's going to be educating and engaging with your leads or your customers. And then there's event automation. So this is going to be date based. So imagine you have a workshop coming up and you want to send reminders ahead of time. Maybe another reminder the day of and then follow-up emails after you can do that here as well. Now let's talk about, and this is really the primary reason why we're covering this topic today, are the campaign send settings. There are a number of different ways that you can set up by default for your campaign to send to your leads or your customers in your Get Oiling system. All right. So our options are as follows. There's email and/or text, meaning the campaign default is that it's going to do both or either one can send. There's email preferred, there's text preferred, there's email only, and then there's text only, right? When you are setting up your campaign, this is the list of options that you have for your default send settings. Let's break these down one by one. Email and/or text, this default setting is something that is going to, or this is what it's going to look like, right? So if a contact is opted in to both email and text, meaning they've gone to a landing page or they've signed in on a page in your system and they've said yes to getting emails and texts from you, the campaign will deliver email and text. Both, meaning it might be duplicate, right? So if a contact, and this is where this is kind of cool, if a contact, for instance, opts out of text, they're still going to get the email, right? But if they are opted into both, they will receive both. Now email preferred, if a contact is opted in to both email and text, the campaign will prioritize delivering this message via email. In the event that it can't deliver via email, it will deliver via text. Similarly, for text preferred, if contact is opted into both email and text, it will prefer to deliver via text, but in the event that it can't deliver via text, the message will be delivered via email. Okay. Now email only, super straightforward. The campaign is only going to deliver to contacts via email. If they opt out of email, they're not getting the message. Same for text, only delivers via text. If they opted out by a text, they're not going to get the message. Now let's talk about how your campaign is set up with these different options. So first, we want to make sure that we're clear on how we want our messages to deliver. So the default for all of the messages is in your campaign settings, right? So you're going to choose one of these options that I've just gone over, right? That's email and/or text, email preferred, text preferred, only email or only text, right? We're going to choose one of those defaults and that's automatically going to apply to every message that you put into a campaign. But you do have the ability to modify how individual messages in your campaign send out. Right? So you could have an entire email or an entire campaign that is maybe email preferred. But there is one that you really want to make sure you only send via email. It's not going to work via text, or you only want to send it via text, et cetera. So this is what this looks like. When you are setting up your campaign and you could actually go back and modify this under your campaign settings, that's this arrow here. We have, this example is email preferred. So we've got our campaign name and we're preferring to send it by email. But I'm going to modify these messages so that they send out a little differently depending on what I need to happen. So let's just say, for instance, our day zero, that's our welcome. We're going to send that by default. We're preferring email if if they, for whatever reason, their email bounces, it'll send them by a text. It's going to get to them either way. And that's great. Now maybe our week one is a longer message. It's one that we really want them to open up and read. Maybe we want them to save this email. I'm going to prefer email for this, or maybe even choose email only for this individual message. But maybe on day two, we're just sending a quick reminder, right? So hey, go log into the vault or something like that, or hey, we have a call today. Remember, go check your email or something like that, right? So we can maybe have text preferred here or even text only and so on. Now best practices, let's talk about our best practices for each of the send settings. Now for email and/or text, this is a default setting in in your Get Oiling system. So you're going to change it from this if you don't want to use this. But this is what it's going to be automatically if you don't make any other changes. So what I want to encourage you to do, because in the email and/or text with this setting, you can often send the exact same content via email and text at the same time. So let's just say, for instance, you've got an educational campaign. And on day one, you're talking about Ningxia and day two, you're talking about thieves and day three, you're talking about kidsense and so on. Now your day one, your email where you're talking about Ningxia, you've got an email about Ningxia, right? And maybe you've got some pictures, you've got some links, you're talking about all kinds of stuff. That email is going to go out, but at the same time, if that person is also opted into text, they're going to receive a text from you at the same time. So it's kind of, it's, it's, it can be a little redundant potentially, right? So what I recommend here is that if you're going to use email and/or text, you make a modification of the message. So if in the main body, if you're sending it via email, you've got a great, nice, long email that's got all these pictures and all this kind of great stuff that's talking about Ningxia. But in the text, we're going to send them a text at the same time we're sending them an email. If you really want to do that, then you might want to say, hey, I just sent you a really great email and maybe you've got a picture that's like a teaser for it. You know, it's a go check your inbox now. You're going to want to see what I sent you. So that way you aren't duplicating the same information. Does this make sense? Feel free to please ask questions if you have them, right? We just want to make sure that we're not, like you run the risk if you are replicating the stuff that you're sending out. You're sending out via email and text the exact same thing at the same time. You're doubly at least increasing your likelihood that somebody's going to want to opt out of one or both of those ways that you're sending stuff and we don't want people to opt out, right? We want to keep them on our list so that they stay engaged. So use that text field to tell them to check their email. And then you could also fill out the subject line, the email body, as well as the text message if sent by text. And make sure, of course, to include images if you're sending by text. So again, the goal here is to maybe create the the bulk of what you're sending in the email and then use the text to support it, but remind them that, hey, there's an email that you're going to want to check out, right? And so this is what that might look like. Right? So you've got your subject up here, you've got your message body, and then you're sending something that is slightly different via text. Now for email preferred, if the content is intended to be read via email, but you do have people that you're sending it to that are maybe only opted in via text, then you're going to want to use this setting. Now the content of your email will be offered as a text with a read here, a read more here link to those who receive it as a text. So this is something that happens automatically. If you have a longer email that sends out via text, it'll say the subject line. So it'll text the subject line and then it'll say read more here. And then when they click it, it'll go to a hidden page on your website that essentially just has your email published on a page. Okay. So if for whatever reason, your email is sent by a text, that's what that's going to look like. So make sure in this case that you're filling out the subject line as well as the email body. And you could optionally fill out the text message if sent by text here as well. And again, our priority is going to be our subject line and our message body. And this is email preferred, the setting email preferred. Make sure that the subject line and message body are filled out. You absolutely can fill out these messages sent by text here as well if you'd like. Now text preferred, again, this is going to be fairly similar. If the content is intended to be read via text, but some of the folks that you're sending this to are email only opt-ins, you want to make sure you're covering your bases, right? So in this case, we're going to fill out our subject line and our email body as well as the text message if sent by text field and include images if you are sending by text. So we would fill out all of these if we're preferring text because we do need to make sure that if something is going out via email, that we have an actual email that's going to them, right? Now email only and text only, these are going to be super straightforward. If the content is intended to be read via email, you're going to want to send it this way. And this is also going to be you. If text marketing isn't a desire or focus of your business, right? If you're not really interested in engaging and sending people text marketing, then you're just going to want to use email only on all of your campaigns that you create. And in this case, again, super straightforward, fill out the subject line and the body of the email so that you've got your email created, right? And so that's just these, the subject line and the message body. Now for text only campaigns, if it's only intended to be read via text, then make sure that you're filling out the text message if sent by text and then add any messages that you want to send with the text as needed. And the subject line that you use here is not actually going to be visible. So you see the subject line up here at the top. This is really just for your own internal reference. If this is something that's being sent by text only, okay? What they're going to see is whatever you put down here in this text message if sent by text field. Right? And you don't have to worry about anything in the body because there's no email going out. And you could simply say something like day two or Ningxia or whatever the the actual, you know, so that you know what the content of that is and you can see it in your list of messages. And again, that's only if you're sending this via text only. Now let's talk about use cases for each of these send options. So for email and/or text, so this sends both email and text. A great option here would be to use a campaign default like this for one that delivers both weekly email digests as well as daily text reminders, right? So your campaign will send both ways and then you're going to go in and modify the messages in the campaign individually so that they can send via the specific memes that you want. So those weekly email digest, maybe those are email only or email preferred, the individual emails. And then those ones that are going to go out daily, which are texts designed to be texts, those will be text preferred or text only on those individual messages. So this is also a great option for date-based campaigns. So in this case, if you are going to confirm registration for an upcoming workshop, you're going to want to send the your registered, you know, confirmation message via email because that's going to have a bit more information in it. But maybe you want to use text to remind them about the upcoming event, maybe an hour before the morning of, et cetera. And you could obviously use text to engage after the fact. Another option here to use this setting would be a campaign that you would send out to all of your customers that maybe invite them to opt in for this month's education. No, Allison, this is a single campaign. And if you're utilizing the email and/or text setting, then you can modify which emails or sorry, which messages in your one campaign send out via email or text. And you can modify those individual messages so that they are able to send via text or email. You don't need to have two different campaigns. All right. So in this instance, so if just a use case here, if you wanted to send out a campaign on the first of the month to all of your customers, because you have maybe a more lengthy education campaign that you are, maybe you've got a series of this month, I'm going to send a diffuser recipe a day. If you would like it, click here, right? So that's its own campaign that here's a, you know, day one, day two, et cetera. But then your campaign that you send out, they can actually click an automation link that then will opt them into that campaign, for instance. You could also, and that's an email option, you could also offer a text encode. And this would be if you are planning to use something as a text campaign. This is part of what you would want to set up in that campaign setting. So maybe if I've got a diffuser a day campaign that people can opt into, then I can instruct them to text the word diffuser to my Get Oiling number. And then that, if I have that set up as the text opt-in code, then folks can opt themselves in via text that way as well. Now email preferred use cases, most use cases are going to apply here where content is best delivered via an email. But you want to make sure you're covering your bases, right? So let's just say, for instance, you have a fair amount of folks who have opted in to receive texts from you. And you of course have folks who have email as well. And this is maybe just an important announcement that you want to get out. Or you know, you want to send out an invitation or invite people to something for, you know, an upcoming event, et cetera. You want to make sure everybody gets it, but you prefer that it goes out via email. That's when you would want to use a setting like this one, email preferred. So you're really designing the message to be read via email, but just in case it, you know, just in case somebody is not opted in via email, you have that opportunity there to opt them in. Now text preferred use case, this is going to be where you maybe have image-heavy educational drip campaigns. So again, maybe an example here would be you have a a diffuser a day, right? A diffuser recipe a day campaign and those those diffuser recipes are in the form of images. Text preferred is how you may want to set that up, but you do want to make sure in case this is delivering via email, that you've got something in the email subject body as well, right? Just in case it does send to somebody via email, because if if for whatever reason, there's nothing inside of that body and it sends to somebody via email, they're just going to open an empty email from you. So reminders again are going to be great for text preferred because this can go out easily via via text. So hey, we're about to go live, but then that would look very similar if sent via email. Accountability, this is another great way to have text preferred campaigns or messages. So maybe you have a daily check-in campaign that you would prefer to text to somebody. But if for whatever reason it went to their email, it wouldn't be a problem. And then of course, you can use this to initiate one-on-one engagement with your contacts. Text is one of the most engaging ways to to send out communications. Email is one of the best ways to educate, right? Because you've got more space to to actually provide that content and substance. But but text preferred would be a great way to begin conversations that you want to really transition to one-on-one conversations. And most use cases here apply where content is best delivered by via text, but you want to cover your bases, just in case somebody is opted out by a text or they're not receiving it, then they would get the email version of that message. Now for email only, this is all use cases, especially if texting is not something that you plan to do or use, right? Sending via email only is a great way to go if you know that you're not going to use text. And then of course, text only is going to be for those educational heavy drip, image-heavy educational drip campaigns, reminders, accountability, and then any kind of engagement. And specifically where you really only want to reach them via text. It is your goal to engage with that person only on their phone, using text and not via email. All right. So let's get into some discussion of this and we can absolutely get into demonstration of some of what we're talking about. If you want to kind of get into some of the more finer use case points. Let me see here real quick. Julianne says, I've noticed when the email address is wrong and not deliverable, it marks the contact as opted out. Is there a way to filter for these contacts so I can double check? Yeah, actually, that is in, I think, actually, let me double check here real quick. That's going to be if you go to your contacts and you go to, and I'm not sharing my screen just yet. If you go to filters and you go to more filters, yeah, there it is. Let me make sure I can show you this here real quick. Okay. So that's going to be again, we're filters. And then it's down here under more filters and you could look for maybe the people who are not opted into email and you can filter for those people here. Or you could see if they're opted into text and you could even see if they're opted in or out of app notifications. And you can apply that filter or multiple filters here in in sort of one go if you want. So that's how you would check. So if I want to find the people who are opted in, not in opted into email and filter for those folks, then here it is. And I would, you know, maybe look for other ways to reach out to them if I know them personally, right? But that's, that's how you would do that. Okay. And then Allison, your question here in the chat. Let me just show you here real quick about about the campaigns when you're setting something up. Just so that you can see, it can be all-in-one. There's no reason for it to to have to be, you know, a labor of multiple things for you. So let's just say this is our new customer onboarding campaign. So this will be welcome. Um, so this will be welcome to Young Living. And then I'm going to send this via either because I'm going to modify those messages inside the campaign. Alright, so I'm going to create it. And this is a use case where I don't need a text in code, right? Because if I'm welcoming somebody, I don't need them to text something to me so that I can welcome them, right? So in this particular use case, uh, we're going to be applying this to our new customer. So now we've created our campaign, we can add a message. And so this is welcome. Um, and I'm going to say, save this email for future reference. And maybe in here, I'm going to put lots of links uh to things like your dashboard and a Facebook group. And you know, all of the basics of here's the things that you're going to need to know. And I know this is a lot, so save this so that you can reference it later. Now, in that case, I really want to make sure that this is sending out via email, okay? And because it's going to be a lot of content here, I don't really want to bother with what goes out via text. I want them to click the link. So what's going to happen? I'm not going to fill anything out right here, but whatever I put here, including the subject line here, that's going to be texted. So when this goes out to somebody, if for whatever reason their email delivery fails, they're going to see in their text from, from Mike at Oiling phone number here, welcome, save this email for future reference. Click here to read more. And when they click, they'll be able to see the contents of whatever I've put here. Alright, so that's our first use case and I want to send that specific email uh, or that specific message preferring email. But if they happen to get it via text, then that's great. Maybe I want to send another message a few days later that just says, you know, hey, just wanted to check in, how are you doing? And I want to only send that via text because what I want from that campaign is for them just to respond to me, right? I don't want to talk at them, I want to talk with them. So this will be um, I'm just going to name this um, engagement opportunity. They're not going to see that because I'm going to send this via text only. And if they're not opted in via text, then they're never going to get this. And that's okay, because I want to be reaching out to them anyway. But they're going to reach out to me if they get this, right? Because I will have sent this text to them. So text message if sent by text, this is where we'll say, hey, just wanted to check in. Um, did you have any questions, right? You could say whatever you want here. And what they're going to get, they're not going to see this. There will be no email sent because it's text only. And this is all they're going to see sent from you in this same campaign. Right? Uh, maybe I want to, I don't know, I want, I want to show them something, tell them something. I may choose to make that email only, right? But the main setting, the default setting is that it could go either way, right? Email and or text. It's just, the important thing is if you're going to go and create a message here, remember that here, I'm going to go add a message. Uh, maybe I'm going to use. Yeah, anyway, here, I'm, I'm just going to say, uh, learn more about bundles. And I've got a bunch of information here about bundles, okay? Now, if I keep it as the default and I don't have anything here, what they're going to get is both an email that says, learn more about bundles with all of the information that's here in the body. And they're going to get a text that says, learn more about bundles, click here to learn more. So they're getting both of those at the same time. So my suggestion would be that you either uh choose to prefer email for this so that it only sends one way. Or you could have this great information in here that talks about all these bundles. And then you could say, hey, I just sent you some info about major savings. Make sure you check your inbox for a message from me today. Right? That way we're respecting their time and not annoying them by sending them the exact same stuff two ways, right? But we're referencing something, right? So they're going to go and check their email and they will be sent, they will have been sent whatever is here. And that's if we keep the default, right? So I hope you guys are kind of seeing the distinction here of how we would go about utilizing these different um means of sending. Okay, uh, let me see, can you explain how the text credits work? I get confused by it. Um, I don't feel like I am the best qualified to explain that. Craig, can we ask you to do that, please?
Certainly can. I'm going to drop a link in the Q and A. Do we have a help article that explains all the details of it? But generally speaking, so if you're messaging people in the US or Canada, uh, if you include a picture, it uses forty credits per recipient per text. So if you end up, um, if he's ten, messaged ten people, for example, it would use uh four hundred credits. If, if you do not include a picture, uh, it only uses fifteen per recipient. So ten people would be a hundred and fifty. The chat feature in two-way texting, um, if you have two-way texting turns on, does not use any credits. Um, so that's, you know, something to keep in mind. Uh, you can only do one-to-one messaging with that though. Uh, there are other nuances there as well uh that the article has. But it'll show you, basically you send it, it, there's a little calculator when you're sending a bulk message and it'll estimate what you're going to use. There's some extra rules for emojis and some other stuff that's, you know, it's just how the texting world works, unfortunately. Uh, we just kind of pass along the cost that they provide to us and uh, in the form of credit. So yeah, if you have uh any other questions, certainly let me know.
Awesome. Um, there is a, uh, it's a really great question, Krishonda. Um, is there a way for us to make that click here to read more page for a text only campaign? I like that it's a short text and the page they go to still has their name from the personalization tag. So Krishonda, cool thing about this is um, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that this is exactly how this works. Um, if you want this to be a text only campaign and you want to use that uh click here to read more, you're going to give it a subject line that you want them to see. And then fill out the body just like you would in email. Right? And then that text is going to go out to them. You're not going to put anything actually down here in this field. So you would be, this is a text only campaign, but you're actually filling out all of your content as though it was an email. And then every text that they're sent is going to be the subject line plus a link to go to a, you know, that peak, that page on your website uh that's created when you send this email out, right? So that's how you would do that. It's just pretend like you're, you're creating an email campaign. Um, and don't fill out the text message of sent by text field and send the tech, the campaign by text only. Uh, let me see. The, so two-way texting is, uh, it is an upgrade in the system. Uh, if you want to be able to respond back and forth, uh, there's a little sort of message that goes out. If you are, you can send via text uh without having opted into two-way texting and paid extra for that feature. It's just they can't respond to you directly. It'll say, respond to this number and it'll be whatever number you've put in as your contact information. Um, but if you want to have that seamless engagement of something was sent from your system and you can respond back to them and it's all in your contact manager, then you're going to want to look into getting that two-way texting feature uh with Get Oiling, which is just such a cool like integration of all the things. Alright, so there's another question here. It wasn't directly related uh to um campaign specifically, but I think it's very, it's very closely related. Uh, and Stephanie's question here uh is, is it possible to have some saved buttons with links that we can easily use again and again in our emails? So yes, there is, but you're not going to be looking for buttons to do this. You're going to be using saved replies. So I'm actually here right now in an email and um, that, for a campaign. And, and so essentially uh what you're able to do is just pop in uh your saved reply uh right here. Right? Using whichever one that you've already created. So maybe there's a button that you really like uh to use that, that, that goes to a specific place. And you know, you're going to use this over and over and again in your campaigns or your broadcasts. Uh, or even, you know, in your vaults or on your blog posts, then you're going to want to create a saved reply. So just go over into settings and you can create a saved reply from a message that you're actively editing. I just wanted to show you where uh, where these are. And actually, sorry, that's been moved. Let's just type in saved replies. That was my muscle memory of years of doing this. So here we go, saved replies. And we're going to add one. And let's just say that I really love uh using a call to action that says uh, head over here now to join our community and meet uh your tribe. And then I'm going to add a button. Uh, and I can click this more rich right here and insert button of my choice. So I'm going to use this one perhaps. There it is. And I'm going to edit the link to send it to wherever I want it to go. Uh, and I'm going to say uh, join the group. And click update. And so I'm going to save this. Oops, this is going to be uh, join the group, call to action. That's what I'm going to name it. And so if I'm in my campaign, uh, we'll just pretend that it's this one. Then we can actually go to um, we'll just go somewhere inside of our existing message. And then we can go and find our saved replies. And I'm going to find that call to action. Oops, type that in right here, call to action. Join the group and it's going to pop it in. So it, you actually have that here. So it's not just the button. You could just have the button here and use your saved reply to drop in that button that you want to use over and over again. Uh, but you can um not just do that. You can bring in e- exactly all of the formatting and any of the call to actions that you want to include entire sections with pictures and photos and all kinds of stuff that you want to drop into your newsletter. So saved replies, Stephanie, is how you're going to want to do that. Uh, saved replies are um, did, did they get moved in our recent um, like sort of?
No, they're under the content library now.
Content library, that's right. Yeah, that's because, so yeah, we've moved saved replies to the content library. Just think for those of you who like me, just went by muscle memory to the contact settings. Content library is now where we have your videos, your files, your images and your resource bundles. And the reason why we have saved replies here is because they're not just for sending emails, right? They're for your blog posts, they're for creating content for your uh, your memory area. So saved replies, you'll now, you'll now find that here, but also you can of course always search for it if you need to. Um, formatting of my emails is often inconsistent, not sure why, different font sizes and colors without me changing this. Why is this? So sometimes Stephanie, if you are beginning with uh an email that was maybe like part of a resource bundle, maybe somebody else had it before you, uh, maybe like this one actually, for instance, right? This is one that would have been claimed from a um, from a resource bundle. Cause it's got this image in it. Um, there's, there's a chance that whatever the formatting was, the font faces and things like that from that other user who created the bundle uh copied into your account, but maybe you don't have that same font. Uh, or your heading font is different from theirs. And so it's going to look a little bit different. That's often going to be the case where you're experiencing that sort of difference uh in, in your um, different font sizes and colors, that inconsistency. You want to make sure that you have your um, your fonts and colors, uh, your defaults set up here. Feel like I need to sneeze, so distracting. Um, so your, your fonts and colors, make sure you have your defaults set up. And then um, as you're composing your emails, you'll often find if you're just starting over from scratch uh with, or you're starting with a brand new message, um, it's going to function in your defaults. So if for instance, um, you know, this one, this one is set up for the default, but maybe I want this to be a, a header. Uh, so if I go to paragraph, whatever my heading is set up for the font and, and the weight and everything, it's going to have that default there. So what you could do for the body is to just select all of it. And then just go to this normal setting, right? First, so that, that actually is applying your normal settings. It's going to remove any of the, the paragraph settings and things like that that might make things large, right? And that's under the paragraph. Uh, and then you can actually go and make sure that the font family uh is the correct one uh that aligns with your brand. This is just, again, it's going to vary based on what you've imported into your account. Okay, um, kind of topic, would you create a campaign to remind or point to your vault? Confused about how to get my team in there and sending notifications as new content and blogs are added. So um, I would create a saved reply and pop that at the bottom of every single email that you send out that's reminding them that there's new content. Uh, and then sure, yeah, absolutely. Um, your uh welcome to vault campaign can have more than one message, right? Um, you also, and this is an even better way to do this. Uh, if you have added them to the vault, then you have the ability here as well to send in activity reminders. And that's not going to be your campaign necessarily, but it's going to be under reminders here. Uh, so if folks haven't come in and engaged after a certain number of days, you can actually send them things, right? So if it's after this many days, it's after this many days. Um, if you're wanting to make sure that people are going in and engaging uh with your vault, that would be my recommendation. Okay, so we have a, we have someone signed up for a live review today. I only want to make sure that we give you the time that you asked for. Uh, let me see, Colette, here we go. Let's bring you out to chat. Welcome. Happy to have you here this week.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, how can we help?
Um, how can, uh, how can you help? Uh, I thought it was a review for my website.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, you want to review your homepage?
Yes, please.
Okay, perfect.
My English is not that good, eh?
It's fine. It's totally fine. Okay. So first, beautiful colors.
Thank you.
Okay, first, there is a little bit of difficulty in being able to see this part. So I'll show you in a moment how I, I might suggest making some changes there. The difficulty here is because you have um a really high contrast background image. So you have a very dark and also a very light. So the way that this uh behaves is going to be a little different, right? Uh, based on the size of the screen. So we want to make sure that we've got this uh, that part worked out. And what that might mean is maybe on mobile, um, you have a section that has this dark color. And maybe this is um, you know, a, a lighter color so that there's a contrast. And then you still have this nice uh image underneath, but we, we can look at that in the editor in just a moment. Another thing I'm seeing is that we are aligned to the left and um, and potentially kind of coming off the page here. So we want to look at margins. These look great. I love these.
Can I share my screen somewhere?
Not sure that you're able to. Is there something you want to take a look at specifically?
Yeah, because on my uh website, on my, my screen, it is different. It's uh.
Yeah, so it is going to be different on everyone's screen because not, not everyone has the same size monitor. Um, or the same size display. So um, and this is why I think it's really important to make sure that, that we kind of dig into and we can actually go take a look at um, pages. Here we go, here's home. Utilizing these uh, these previews. This actually, let's see. Yeah, you can kind of see here, excuse me. You can see here that, that we have that same kind of issue over here on the left with um, with our margin on this one. That's really lovely. I, I like the design that you have here.
Thank you.
Um.
It's all gong.
It's all what?
Ganga.
Kamba, yeah. Yes, did, do you work with Katinka?
Yeah.
She's a master.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so uh, let's go look at this section. So this um, okay, do you see how this is actually off to the left a bit? Yeah, right? The, the margin is off to the left a bit. So let's take a look, I think that that's just here inside of this whole section. So um, we're going to take the element style editor. And let me see if we can just select this and see if there's any. Might need to do some playing around with this. I think that there's another container that is maybe being affected here that I'm having trouble selecting, right? Cause it's, I've got the whole thing, but then there's, hmm, let me see. What we may need to do is just create a new section with your content here uh and that background. Just to, to make life a little bit easier. So I'm going to copy all of this. And then we're going to just, we're going to start fresh. Sometimes we, we tweak and um, and, and then we, we find ourselves in a place where, you know, it's just easier to create something new. So uh, let's change to that image that you have. Which is really, it's really nice, but and, and I do want to address the um, the contrast as well uh when we can. Where is that background? Did I miss that? Or is it maybe you?
I think it's lower.
Yeah, I think so too. Okay.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, these have text over them though. So I think there's maybe another one.
Yeah.
Hmm. Aha, maybe this or this, this one. Yeah, because you have, it's a longer section. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, perfect. So this one has this background image. Okay, and we want to center it. Perfect. And then we can put our content in here. And we'll paste that. Okay. You know what I might need to do here, actually, is you see what we're, okay. I don't think that's actually the correct image. So we may want to, you, you'll want to adjust accordingly because you see how the resolution is quite different between these two. But what we'd want to do here. I'm sorry?
Maybe it was the other one.
Hmm. Yeah, it, it could be, it could be maybe this one. Okay. Oh, that's, okay. Yeah, that's, that's fine. Okay, so, so a couple of things, because and let's maybe take a look at, I'm going to hide this other one that wasn't working correctly. And then we can take a look at maybe the mobile and the tablet view. So this.
Oh, yeah.
Right? You can see that it's, it's fitting a little bit better here.
Yeah.
But we do want to address the contrast, just because, you know, we, we want people to not, it needs to not feel like work to, to read, you know? So I'll show you how we can do that here in just a second, but that's looking better here. And you can see that we don't have the weird left migration of the content here. So here's what I, I would potentially do here. I would take this, copy it. And I'm going to delete it. And I'm going to keep some space here. So there's two options. This is one that, that you might consider. And that would be to create an additional section that is just a background color and it's going to be the, a matching background color to this section here. So I'll select this. And then we can take your text and we can paste it here. But then we can change the color to something that contrasts a little bit more nicely so that we can see it.
Hmm. Oh, yeah.
Right? Yeah. Now, another, another option that you might consider where you've got, again, you've got a high contrast and where this darker color hits the darker background, you might consider using this element style editor here. Select the entire background. And then maybe you give it some opacity. Right? So that it, it kind of pops over the top, or you could even blur the background a little bit. And in that case, maybe the section background, if you want this to kind of flow, you could use like a parallax background. And then that way. And again, I'm not sure that this is necessarily the best. I don't know that I chose the correct thing, but now you can actually see, you can read this, this font. And then you, you see how we're kind of floating over that, that thing in the background there?
Yeah.
So, so that way it's all very easy to read, but you still have, you know, the nice kind of color happening there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think there was another that, oh, it was this.
Yeah, I didn't get it right.
Is this a column? Is it? No? Okay. So here's, you're wanting these to be fairly far apart, right? Because this is I, I, I see what we're doing. Okay. So basically what you would do is you would replicate this background or you would, you would create a new section, but essentially what you're going to try to do here is, let me see if I can play around with this. Greg, what do you figure or Colin or Julie experts? What, 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 what do you figure might be happening here?
Help.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like there was some position adjustment when you had hovered over the text. So that's probably part of what's going on there. And then combined with the background image, I think the rest of it was just a background image, but the text kind of moved off to the side.
Uh huh. Okay. So so position.
Yes, it is a Canva background image.
Yeah.
And I put a text in it, on it.
I see, I see. Okay. Yeah, so what we can do here is I'm going to go to this content. Hopefully I can do this here. I'm going to actually delete. No, I want to keep that. Mui twenty-eight. Okay. I'm going to delete this extra space over here. And this, this is going to kind of wipe out our, our formatting here, but that's okay. So I'm going to make this one column. And I'm going to paste this here. There we go. So this is one column and we're not going to love the way that this looks, right? Because it's, it's left aligned. It's a single column. But what we're going to do is we're going to use this edit columns here. And we're going to make this column smaller. Maybe four. And then I'm going to add a column. And I'm going to go in and delete this text here because we don't want anything in the column. And then I want column two. Let's see. Yeah. So column two here and then multiply the column. And what is going on with my screen right now? Where did it go? Oh, here. Okay. Okay, so back to our column editor. That's why I was doing that. All right. So I want to take this down to four. And then I want to duplicate it. And then I want to move this one over. So now this is over to the left. And obviously you're, you'll want to modify this and forgive me. If I could speak Dutch, I, I would fix this. But, but I don't. But yeah, so, so this, you now have columns here that are going to, when we are viewing this on mobile in this section, it's not going to necessarily create that. Here, let's go find it. Okay, yeah, we still have something to work on here with how this is showing up. Because that's not. Okay, here's what I would do. I, I would again, just start from scratch with this section. Let me copy this. And then what you would do here is you would create, I mean, I would just start with one column, no header. That just makes life really easy. We're going to put our text in here. I don't know why it's doing this. Part of the, okay, here we go. I don't want a column. And I think that's part of my issue. Oh, I see. There's lots of space. That's what's happening. Okay. So I'm just going to make sure that, that this is very simple. There we go. We want this to be centered where we have it, once we have it ready. And then what we'll do, and you can, when we're done here, you can take this background image and just apply it to this one here. But just like I did before, I'm just going to multiply columns here. I'm going to shrink the size of this one to say six. And then I'll add two more columns of three that will be empty, right? And I'm just going to duplicate this one after I delete its contents. So duplicate that. Oops, I keep trying to do this when I'm in the, the content editor. Okay, here we go. So here we go. I want this one duplicated. And then I'm going to move this one over. And then once you take this image and you put it on the background, I think it's going to behave more like what you're wanting it to look like, and it's not going to negatively impact how it shows up on, on mobile. Potentially, you do want to make sure that the background image is set up such that, for instance, like your photo might not be showing here. But this part would be, and you can play around with that by using this, the previewer.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Let me see. I think that was really it was just modifying those. I think when the reason why I think in both of these cases, we, we saw some issues was that you were wanting to really just kind of position the text in a particular place and it looked good on your specific computer, but you always want to make sure that you're checking the previews on a computer phone or computer tablet and phone. And then where you want to create space air on the side, like we're doing here, air on the side of using columns because that's going to play well with mobile and it's not going to impact how it's viewed on the different, different sizes of devices. So if I could find really quickly, I wonder if I can find that, that image of you and I can actually show you the difference of what that looks like. I know I saw a version of it here. You have so much great Canva content in your account.
I'm thinking of the second.
Yeah, let me see. I'm not not seeing it. I don't know why. Oh, maybe this, but it's flipped around.
Yeah, the other is a little bit higher, the other one.
Uh huh. Okay. So this one, here, I'll actually, you know what I'm going to do? It's not exactly the same, but it's, you'll, you'll see what I'm getting at. So if I go back to the columns, I'm just going to move the text one over. Right? So that it's over here. And then we will modify the padding here so that there is a bit more space on the top and bottom of the section. So that's the pencil here. So that's going to be right down here. And then what you may again choose to do is let me see, we want this to be, we do want this to be left aligned because we want them to see the left side or a bit more of the left side as opposed to the right side where the picture of you is when this shrinks down to mobile. So we'll keep that here and then we'll keep it centered on the up-down axis. And then the final thing that I would do here, again, just because of the high contrast is using the element style editor, I would select this. And then either, well, I would do both. I would add some opacity here so that we've got some lightness behind it. And then potentially blur a little bit of the background. And you could even give it a little bit of padding itself. Right? Just to just so it's not so squished in there. And so then, yeah, when, when you go to view that section.
Yeah, much better. Yeah.
Yeah, when you view it on, on the different, different viewing options, you'll have, you see, see in this case, we actually need to make some adjustments to the background image, but you can see this a lot better.
Yeah. Better, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I would just play around with maybe, I know this, this might not be the correct background image, but maybe in this case, the background image will be fully left automatically aligned. And then we can, we can see with that. Looks like. Yeah, there we go.
Yeah.
See, if it's, then it's not competing with the picture of you. And the final thing, and this is, this is minor. The final thing I would encourage you to do is, and this is in your menu, is to consider consolidating a little bit of, of your menu items, right? So contact is something that's throughout your website. Maybe that's not something you have in your menu. You know, maybe there's a learn tab where they can read your blog or they can get a, a free, they can get a course or a freebie. And so that way you're not going to have this kind of overlapping here.
Yeah, it's too much. Yeah.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Yeah, but you're doing a beautiful job and I'm, I'm really excited to see everything else that you do. And I love that you're practicing homeopathy. That's awesome.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. It was very clear. And how did you do the thing with the, oh yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, with the three columns.
Yes, yes. Use the column editor if you want to move something to the left or the right.
I didn't know that. Okay. And do I have what you made now? Do I have it on my menu?
Oh, yeah. Would, would you like for me, well, on your, your homepage, do, do you want me to save the changes that I've made?
Yes, please.
Okay, awesome. Well, that's done. So you've got that as a starting point to work from.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming on today.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And thank you for coming out and, and sharing and showing your amazing work with the community. You guys got a little bonus today of seeing how you can make some really nice modifications of a beautiful website design. So hope you guys liked that. I hope it inspired you. Keep up the good work. And obviously Katinka is, is creating some really amazing students with that work. She's amazing. And Colette, you're doing, again, just really, really gorgeous work there. So awesome. You guys, I think we're good on, on questions. We'll be back next week, same time. Check in with us in our Facebook groups. Come say hello and we will see you back here next, same time next week. Take care, everybody.